Do you have a motion to approve? All in favor?
Aye.
There's a letter from the select board requesting, uh, planning board to be with them on Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at three P M. to discuss a moratorium on large field, um, solar system. Of course, we had a joint meeting with the planning board and the select board.
What time?
At three P M. Tuesday, February nineteenth. I'm looking for the bill.
Yes, I can go.
On the three P M. yes. And there's a meeting, uh, Tuesday, February nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen. This is a C C. for the planning board, um, regards to, uh, Florida Health Republic here. Which will be held two ninety seven state street, Grammy, in the Nash, uh, two ladder, uh, community room. Uh, just to go over the land application, installation of the stud, proposed policy of the affirmations if you do not give it through the following name, the case of the study of the study, and the set ten evidence of the town. Or if I do it, do it. Five thirty-five, the A N R. for Tillestree. Want to hear from Tillestree?
Yes.
Did you sign it?
I did sign it. And I tried to file this a few times, but it's still coming. So I don't know, should I pass it along, or do you guys want to pass it along?
I think I'll leave it there.
Stand, stand.
You can explain.
Yes. Um, it's a large tract of land, uh, the Humphreys here currently have an estate lot. They don't own any of the ship that they're going to own with the planning board. They're going to pick up this parcel A, which would then give them sufficient frontage under the existing zoning by law, about a hundred and sixty feet at that point. And then this would create an estate lot for these parcels. Uh, this would be retained by this tract. They're not planning to build or do anything on my horses, or that sort of stuff. Keep it as conservation, whether there's some issues with somebody to back it, we all kind of agree upon. Um, so the goal is that this is approved, this is in bay A, to be joined or helped together with Mr. and Mrs. Humphrey and Ms. Kock, who then would have the estate lot, which is the surveyor has the premises.
The premises, which is the original right now?
I'm sorry?
What is the original right now?
Okay, uh, the Humphreys own this piece right here. And they're going to pick up approximately a hundred and twenty, two hundred feet, which would give them a hundred and sixty-two feet.
Should take about a bunch?
I think it's a hundred and fifty. Talk to us later. This is set, and it's drawn, it's going to be a grand estate lot, because this obviously...
Square footage here.
Uh, it's a couple acres. I'd have to pull the deed back in on the computer and look at the plan. That's, yeah, that, that's not going with Humphrey. See, this is twenty more essentially that the Humphreys are picking up. This is probably three or four. It'll be twenty-five essentially what they'll pick up.
Have that square and all this?
Uh, y- yes, ma'am. Th- this, it's kind of a funny shape, but this, this is parcel A, all in here.
So you're combining this with this?
Yes, sir.
Two lots.
Uh, I don't even put that on here. Doesn't look like he did.
What's that?
I don't see, I know what you're asking, you know, sort of a general overview.
So no, to describe the purpose?
Yeah, he doesn't, uh, it doesn't appear that that's... Like center street's like about up here, and you come down.
This is Bill Conley McPlant's old house.
Yes.
Jennifer McPherson, Hubbard Drive. Oh, so it's coming up, Mrs. McPlant. Yes. So center street comes off.
Yes, sir. That's exactly right.
This was all property that was owned by Montetta Taylor.
Yes. Yeah, and then this was out of Montetta, that is.
A number of parents.
And I think this is where the plant's house was, up here.
Well, I think it was here. It looks like Dirk must have bought something at some point. Maybe, I, I'm not sure.
So that makes two, three lots altogether?
Yes, so to, yes.
One here and two in that?
Yes, there, yes, ma'am. That's correct. And that would obviously remove, the Humphreys would no longer be in the state lot. They'd be conforming at that point with the extra frontage and plenty of square footage.
Isn't the intent to access this lot from this strip?
Yeah, well, yes, I mean, they also, we're going to, when they exchange, it's going to be a common, the Humphreys are going to give access to Mrs. Kock over there, drive by virtue of, you really can't really come in very well. You can, but it's not easy. So, um, we're going to draft an easement for common access. And again, there's really no intention, the major reason to buy this was for horse riding and hiking. No one's, at least in this lifetime, planning to build, but that's not to say in decades to come, someone else owned it, that may become an issue.
So this is all high and dry? And it's forty foot?
Yes.
We can approve this, but it does not, it does not, um, we're not approving this as a building lot.
I agree.
We're just approving it as a separation.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't, we're not there today. If you wanted a building permit, we can come back and explain why.
Because I don't, I don't know how...
New dance you get.
I'm not sure how that...
You mean the access? Well, I, I agree. I, I think, and then maybe that's for another day, but obviously, there's been, these Humphreys and the Ms. Kock are, for lack of better description, on the same page, so they're going to share, uh, in the short...
Do we have a common driveway and so forth, perhaps?
Perhaps, or an easement, or, we haven't gotten really that far. This, it took the surveyor a while to put this back to us, and we did close, Ms. Kock owns it. And so, and I agree, I, I think we're not looking for determination today that we're building anything, but, you know, maybe in the future, that's another discussion.
Is the land under sixty-one A?
It is.
So when that comes out, you have to...
Yeah, they're, they're leaving, they don't want to take it out.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because I notice the right of first refusal and all that other stuff, but they're, she's filing applications to keep it in.
Okay, okay.
We acquired it subject to, when we might get the chance to use. I've usually seen it, I don't know if that's a supposed technical requirement. I've seen it, uh, to, you know, they have like an overview of, of, you know, they show this whole thing, kind of like up there.
Just because the locals know where it is, doesn't mean that somebody else is looking at this plan and want, yeah, I think there should be a locus.
And isn't that any of the other ones?
No, no, this is the, let me look at the bylaw before I say that, because that's...
The bylaws.
The bylaws. Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm saying. I, I don't believe the locus is on, no. So I, I don't think it's a major issue to have that and then get that back to you guys.
Let me just check something real quick.
Sure.
Jim? This is the, yeah, Jim? I don't know if this is what you're looking at. Anything's around that, so...
But I would think you could put that in, maybe right here. Yeah, almost anywhere.
Required.
It's not a shame, it's just tricky.
So is that somewhere on the checklist?
Hundred and sixty-two forty.
Okay. Okay.
This, not to tell you, this presently is an estate lot with this, then take it out and put it on.
In bigger form.
So do you want me to take this back and then drop it back to you guys, or you want me to be on the agenda again?
We'll see what you must look at.
It's not required, then?
I, I don't think it's, I could be wrong, I don't think it's a technical requirement if you look at the A N R. statute, but I, I have no objection to putting it on either, right? I did, from a conveyancy point of view, from somebody's registry, in your, from the...
Right, right.
I, I think it's nice, as a matter of conveyancy, I think it'd be a nice thing to have.
Pift what where it is.
Yeah, well, as you said, I don't remember where it is, because it's, yeah.
Bob's our name and I, people that used to live there.
Yeah, yeah.
The locus, yeah, number eight, so locus by...
Locus is required.
May I see it just for my own, I'm going to do it, I'd just like to see it.
Oh, sure. Well, let me give you two things. This is, uh, the bylaws.
Okay.
That section of the subdivision bylaws. And those are repeated in the guidelines.
Okay. Thank you very kindly.
You're welcome.
If you drop those off at town hall...
We can do it that way.
You don't have to show up.
Okay. So give them to Kathy Leonard, perhaps? And I owe you guys a check, I think, or should I give that to Kathy when I drop it?
I'd give Kathy and drop it off.
Okay.
You're not going to sign anything.
That would be for three, I believe.
Three, yeah, I got the check for three lots.
Yeah.
And it's seventy-five per, is that correct?
No.
One twenty-five, I try to have a check for three seventy-five, yes. And may I keep these, or are these going back to your market? Thank you for your, sorry, no, no, that's what's right, that's what should be. And I'll get them back up to the surveyor, and I'll get them to Kathy, and I appreciate your consideration.
And don't, are those your papers, too?
No, sir, I, this is the agenda.
Yeah.
And did you have the two eight and a half by eleven?
The, the sheets filled out? Yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
You want them, or should I give them to Kathy?
No, no.
Yeah, sign by the owner and...
And you signed in there, so I have...
Yes, 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 ma'am, I did. I do have those others.
Okay. Sounds great, Jim, thank you.
That plan, then, and subject to the addition of...
We're going to, he'll bring it to town hall. It'll show up at our next meeting, and then we'll, we'll sign off, and then we'll go.
And I'll drop the Ds and the check and everything up to Kathy Leonard.
Perfect. Sounds great.
So we'll bring it back for our next meeting and prove it open.
It's the next meeting, so I can...
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
You want to say?
Yep. Oh, you, looking for a motion?
No. Okay, if you want to make a motion, sure, but, yeah. Sorry.
I'll make a motion that we close the meeting to be reconvened after the public hearings. And I'll make a motion to open the public hearing for Borrego Solar Systems.
Do you have a second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? So it's five forty-nine, actually, so, uh, we have a continuing hearing to consider the application for Borrego Solar System, Inc., of fifty-five Techno- Technology Drive, Suite one oh two, Lowell, Mass. zero one eight five one, for special permit and site plan approval as required in the following sections of the Grammy zoning by law. Section three point zero, Table one, Schedule of Use Regulations. Section five point nine nine, Large-Scale Ground-Mounted Solar Photovoltaic Insulations. Section six point two, Special Permits. Section six point three, Site Plan Approval. The applicant's proposed to install a six point two megawatt DC ground-mounted solar photovoltaic facility on the approximately thirty-acre portion of parcel land located at zero Kendall Street, Assessor Parcel, ID eight dash B dash five, owned by Breezy Acres LLC, of twenty-five Pleasant Street, Grammy, Mass., which is located within residential single-family RS zoning district.
I'm Dean Smith, I'm a civil engineer from Borrego Solar. Uh, we worked back and forth with your peer, your, um, Thai and Bond. Uh, she sent an email prior to the last hearing date stating that her concerns were, were taken care of. So, so here to talk about the latest submittals that we've made to you, uh, the other analysis that we've done, and hopefully new things forward. Some of the things that have changed since you last saw the plan are, uh, we were proposing some impacts in the hundred-foot buffer around this wetland area that's on site. We've now backed our system off, pulled our fence line out of that buffer, um, and we'll, we won't need a notice of intent from your conservation commission, we're going to be requesting, uh, an R D A from them, because we are mainly out of their jurisdiction, so we're asking for a negative determination from them, in terms of activity.
How far have you moved it back?
We moved it completely out.
Completely out of it?
Uh, there is one small area where we need to clear some trees for a water management feature, but that's it. The, the system and the fence are outside that hundred-foot buffer. Uh, there was a portion of our access drive that was within that before, that's all been pulled out of the hundred-foot buffer. If you can see how large that dark green space is around that, this is what the site plan looked like before. So we were, we were impacting some portions of that, that we backed off of. In addition to that, with our latest submittals, we provided a glare analysis that shows that there, there isn't any potential glare from the system, either from Kendall Street or from any of the adjacent residences. We also had a noise analysis done, uh, and so we're proposing around this northern equipment area, some solid fencing, uh, that their analysis shows that we won't affect any of the adjacent properties with, uh, with any noise concerns. We also did some visual analysis, and have copies of that for you here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And what the, the first...
Watch your step there.
Yes. So what you're looking at there on the first page, uh, well, there's two staple pages, which are cross-sections. Uh, the little key map up in the upper left-hand corner shows you where those view corridors are from. And as you can see, because of the topography, uh, there aren't any potential view corridors from the Kendall Road corridor, which is on the left-hand side there. So the topography is such that you really don't get any views back through there. We did, in addition to that, also have our consultant take some adjacent photos, so we looked through the second and third property there. Those are some views from the neighboring properties. And again, the key map in the corner shows you where you're looking at from there. Uh, the first view is the existing view, and then on the turn to the second page, it will show you what the system would look like behind that. And those are taken with, since the foliage has, has fallen from the digital trees, so it would be the basically the worst of what you would see through there. That first view, um, you really can barely see the system, even with all the trees down. You have to look pretty carefully to even see it in the background. It's just very slight, right here, at the time of the tree.
Fifteen years, I'm sorry.
Yes, on the other view, though, that's on the property that's ever had a clearing that comes over the back. So that's, that's from this property right here. And they have some outbuildings that are on each individual site. You can see the steel garage-type buildings in the background there. And our system is visible behind that when you project it in the, in the visual analysis. So we, we want to propose a double row of evergreen trees along that section, as you can imagine.
How tall the tree is going to be?
Uh, we, we like to propose six to eight feet, because they're, that's the best size or the tallest size that sets really well and thrives. After that, when you start to get taller than that, they're hard to acquire, and they also don't survive as well. So, uh, we'll pick varieties that grow quickly. So within two to three years, they would catch up to a larger tree anyway, and we wouldn't have to be replacing and starting all over again.
So how tall are they going to be when you first plant it?
Six to eight feet.
Okay, they are going to be that tall when you first plant it? So it's a tree?
It would be an evergreen tree.
So every, all the canopy and all that is where the spring is?
Yeah, they tend to be more triangular shaped, like an evergreen, because those keep their foliage all year long. If it's the planning board's desire that we, they'll use a variety of species, we can use some deciduous trees or something else that looks like a more natural buffer, but those would lose their foliage in the wintertime.
But if you did like arborvitae?
Arborvitae is one of the varieties that we use quite frequently. There are some species of arborvitae that are more air resistant, because they can be a little susceptible, some, some varieties that are pretty susceptible to being hit. But it grows quickly, it stays full, it's full to the ground, so that's the type of species that, that we...
That's true.
Yes.
Now, in the second picture here, is this, is this a fence back there? That is? The fence?
That would be our fence, yes.
Okay.
So that's the fence around our system, so that's what you would see once the system...
So your system's actually on the other side of the fence?
Yes.
Are there privacy slats in that fence?
We can do that, uh, we're, we're perfectly happy to provide a slatted fence if that's the planning board's desire. We would just ask that...
Well, you're going to plant arbres in front of it, or some sort of...
It would be in front of the fence, yes. So it would be on the exterior of the fence, but in some cases, just to make sure we do provide a slatted fence through that area, we're happy to do that for...
So that's going to be a chain link fence, or better?
It's a chain link fence that's proposed, so there are slats that slide down in that.
Right.
It can be a color that, that the planning board designates. We usually use a green or a brown, and it's that...
Makes sense, it's, the tree is in front of it, it'd be green.
You have your, you had your pivot, or whatever you call it.
It did move on the later, uh, layouts.
You had it right near the wetlands there, right?
It is still north of the wetlands, um...
You know about how far away?
It is, well, it's more than a hundred feet, but not a lot more. So it's a hundred plus, probably a hundred and, a hundred and five, a hundred and ten feet away.
Now, these, these two properties, they're in the pips from. Are these like the two properties that have the most visual of the area?
They are from these properties that are, are closest to this corner, and also from these properties that are on the side or right.
Do you have any questions?
No. Does anybody in the audience want to see this, see these?
I have some other questions with the other way, or? I have some questions on the response to the period. Do you want to do that now?
Yeah, no.
I didn't know if you had more, more showing out there.
Please, they might be staffed, so... They just couldn't see what we were looking at, that's why.
No, I also have to, I'll get you anyways.
No, did you say that you were going to put up, uh, a solid fence around it?
You can do it around that corner as well, it would vary the visibility from this side.
Is it just from where your residence is? My son.
Oh, your son. So he's on the north side of where our driveway is, probably?
He's on the south side.
Oh, okay.
So he's that first lot?
In here?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, we are proposing, let's get, we can wrap it around the corner there, behind that residence, with the solid fence, and, uh...
How far off the property line is the fence going to be?
The fence, I don't have it dimensioned here, but it is approximately fifty feet along the property line there.
Is the road going to be?
The road is on the... On the inside of the fence, yes. So it's inside the fence, at that point.
Now, when, uh, we were here a couple, three, four times ago, and, uh, Thai and Bond was here, they said that you had the delineate where your, uh, staging, uh, area was going to be, like, no...
Yeah, we haven't designated anything outside the fence, uh, she didn't bring that up in her latest response. Uh, what we do on a system of this size is we usually stage in one area of the project area and build on the other end. So the, the construction staging will likely be either up here or down here, and then it will work the opposite direction.
So do you have the back part of this yard? Do you want to picture that, where that fence is going to be?
It's not, it's going to, it's pretty displaced, yes, it's, it's not going to come around with...
Oh, it comes around when it turns to the south. So there's a portion of it that's back here, and then it turns away. And you're going to put the arbolis on, on the exterior, yeah, this would be a slatted fence, and then arborvitae on the outside of the fence. So there would be arborvitae through the fence. Everybody's standing up and around that corner. This would be more what you would have seen from... This would be more what you would have seen from another property on the north end there. So, it will come up and around some of this turn to the corner and is headed west.
About how far are the, the systems from that stone wall around the wet area?
This is a wall right here?
Yeah.
Uh, well, it's great long to that property line there and around soon. It, it comes up to above where our fence line is down here on the south and after it enters the parcel that we're developing.
It looks like there's a pretty big distance between the rock wall and...
It's, again, it's probably, this looks like about seven to five feet long here.
Is there more any questions?
I do. Um, I'm looking at the, your response to the committee's questions, but you have that there. And some, it's probably just, so I understand.
Okay.
Okay, the first one, um, where they say the drawings should reference the source of topographic property line and wetlands delineation data. If this, if this information is based on GIS data, the planning board should determine whether a boundary and topographic survey should be provided. We understand that the project will undergo concurrent review with the Grammy Conservation Commission, but we recommend that the planning board confirm that the Conservation Commission accepts the delineation as shown. And you said the comment has been addressed. Have you met with...
We have not met with them yet. We'll, we're hoping to meet with them later this month.
Okay.
Being that we pulled out of the, the buffer area, um, we're hoping that it's, it's not a long, lengthy public hearing process with them. Uh, this property has been fully surveyed on the ground. So, the, the boundary in Toko was sent by a survey company and I believe we've noted that on the, except for conditions and provided.
Okay, but we still need conservation's, um, response.
I'm hoping that you'll condition your, your action on their approval, which, which we have.
Okay, uh, next page on, uh, number five. The access road turnaround should be dimensioned and reviewed by the fire department for adequacy. Uh, your response would have been that it has been completed. I checked with the fire chief today and he said he never reviewed it and never got anything to review. And so, we don't have anything in writing.
We, we agreed before the technical review committee.
Pardon?
We went before the technical review committee and they reviewed it at that time.
The secondary review committee, is that the roundtable you're talking?
Yes. I'm happy to coordinate with them further. Uh, we're gonna have to apply for a building permit once we get through the Conservation Commission, so I'm happy to, to accommodate whatever they need to...
We need his sign up before we can do anything.
Okay, I can...
That was one of the requirements. And now, this is, um, number nine and number 10. The applicant should clarify how the site will be stabilized following tree clearing and rubbing. And you say this has been provided, see SWPVP, which I really have to look up to find out what it was, has stormwater pollution prevention plan.
Yes.
So, we have that. Can you just tell me where exactly in that plan it answers that question?
It goes through all of the measures that can be taken for erosion control.
Okay.
I'd have to look at it to see exactly which section that is, but I'm, I'm happy to clarify that.
Yeah, if you could, if you could, you know, just clarify where number nine and 10, the applicant should provide a construction sequence. I, I believe that's in there somewhere, but you're referring back to the stormwater. So, if you can just connect those dots for me?
Sure. With, with a site like this, what, what we would normally do for erosion control, since it's forested, they will, um, chip the trees that are, that are taken down on site and they'll construct wood-chip burns in front of the silt sock or silt fence that's there for erosion control. Uh, those can also be spread on steeper areas of the slope to stabilize it. So, we've got very good success with that on other, other sites that we've worked with, some that are, um, much, much steeper than this. We are, we're only developing on the flatted portion of, of the top of the rise here.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, our system stops before the hillside starts to drop away. Uh, but we've had very good success with those woodchips on steeper slopes as well. So, there'll be a, a large quantity of that available on site for perimeter erosion controls as well as throughout the, uh, the array area and follow-up.
Okay, um, number 11, um, and you've already done this, I believe. It's unclear based on, based on site conditions why the proposed internal access road is located within the wetlands buffer zone. And you've already moved that.
We moved it out of the area.
Your response to this has been resolved. The fence line and road were both moved out of the buffer zone once the type of modules was updated and a more efficient product, allowing for a smaller acreage to be needed to reach a similar system size. Two questions here.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we don't have a picture or any details or anything of the new and improved modules, just what you stated in the very beginning of the time.
The, the size of the modules themselves doesn't change?
But they're a different type?
The racking and the modules will look exactly like what we proposed before.
Mm-hmm.
They're just more efficient in the way that they produce. So, for instance, one module produces 390 kilowatts as opposed to 350 kilowatts, just a more efficient module of the same type.
Okay, but we'll still need, like, you showed the detail, showed a picture in the detail in the beginning with all the pictures out there. If we could have that...
You mean the cut sheets from, from the equipment?
Yes.
The cross-section of what it looks like is still on our detail sheet, showing the cross-section of that.
But didn't you say we're gonna use model blah blah panel?
Yes, and that's reflected on the cover sheet. I can provide a, a new cut sheet.
A picture so that when a decision is made, you can say, here's everything, you know, oh, no, that doesn't match. And also, you were saying, um, this, the sufficient panels, new and improved, will allow for smaller acreage to be needed to reach a similar size.
Yeah.
So, are you not gonna need as much as I am?
Right, that's how we moved it out of this, this area.
Oh, that's the smaller, oh, okay.
It's a smaller foot and, uh, equipment.
I think that might be one of my questions.
I'm kind of seventeen, I think you're asking for a waiver of the fence height of the planning?
I'm sorry, go.
You're asking for a waiver of the fence height?
Oh, yes.
From six feet to seven feet?
And, uh, that's what, um, Ty and Juan is recommending.
To a seven-foot fence?
We're required to have a seven-foot fence to meet the electrical, that's why.
And our, I think our bio says six-foot, so we need a waiver on that with the six inches underneath for the fenders to go through.
Sure.
So, that makes it seven and a half feet to go through the road then?
It would, maybe slightly.
So, the, we have these other three things that, um, that Ty and Juan noticed after, after the, they reviewed it and you did your thing. Uh, the applicant shall provide revised site plans, so the board should review of the wetland delineation result and modifications of, to the layout grading, stormwater management system of the project. Does that make sense to you?
You would keep that one, okay.
The applicant shall provide revised site plans to the board, should review of the wetland delineation result and modifications to the layout grading and stormwater management system of the project.
Okay, it's everything nice, but I understand, but they're, they're saying that once we go through the Conservation Commission, if that...
We need the final plan.
If that means that, yeah, that there are changes to this, uh, site layout, that we provide that back to you.
Okay, and the applicant shall provide the final executed SWPVP to the board prior to construction.
Yes, that, that's the way we normally do it.
That's kind of a standard thing?
Yes, it's, it's one of the requirements when we file for our construction stormwater discharges. Uh, that goes through the EPA, so we finalize that and execute it at that time, which is about two weeks prior to mobilization, so it's much, much closer to construction.
And the last one is the applicant shall provide revised site plans and hydraulic analysis slash calculations to the third-party reviewer prior to construction.
Okay, if there's any other changes, we, we provided it based on, on the layout that we have now and, uh, we're happy to keep an open look on anything else that, that gets revised.
Okay.
Now, are you putting a sign that identifies, uh, emergency contact information?
We, we normally have a sign at the entrance that identifies the system owner, emergency contacts, uh, we're happy to provide that.
Can you add that to the plan so...
We can, we can add it, a call out, um, if it's not there now.
Okay.
And light poles, do you have any light poles in, or is it a completely dark area?
It is not completely dark all the time.
[laughing]
There's a single light post at each of the equipment pad areas. It's, it's on an eight to nine-foot pole. It's a single LED light fixture. It's shielded and directed downward. It's also motion-activated. So, uh, there is no access to the site. The gate is locked at all times, so only authorized personnel can come and go or emergency services will have access, uh, through an OX box there. But, um, there aren't very many occasions that we would need to be on-site after sundown because the system itself is not operating after, after the sun goes down.
Unless you had to do some sort of maintenance or...
It would be a very, very unusual situation that we would meet, uh, but we do provide it in the instance that somebody does need to be on-site after dark.
And those are noted on the plans?
They are, I believe that there is a detail on the detail sheet that shows what the paper was, I guess, was...
Okay, I, I must have missed that one.
It was just added on this last version, I believe.
The last version, okay.
Other than co, the contact information for the site on the, the front, when, when you do your, um, your walkthrough with the, the fire department, they should have all that?
Certainly, yes.
At, at headquarters.
We, we do train for all of the emergency services prior to energizing the system, so our, uh, operations division, our project managers will arrange for training sessions with emergency services people. Um, in addition to the identification sign that boards requested, and that we typically provide at the entrance, there'll also be some other, uh, signage that's required by data and triple code.
Sure.
There's small warning signs that have a depiction of the system and point any, you know, emergency personnel or whatnot to disconnect locations and emergency, for emergency needs like that. Uh, it's also cautionary to, if someone from the public comes up to the fence to say, you know, there's electrical equipment inside, please go away.
Go nicely.
Is there any battery storage proposed?
There is. Um, it is up here in this northern equipment pad area. We should provide some information on that if, you know, if there's additional information desired, we can...
How many, how many units are there?
There are two containers, two enclosures.
And how tall are they?
They are approximately 10 feet tall.
And did your visuals model those as well?
Yes, they, they are central to the site. There, there really is not a visual path back to there. In addition, there, there will be a solid fence around a portion of that equipment area that's towards the, towards Kendall Road and towards the residences.
Is there a, is there a...
So, you said the equipment is smaller, are we still talking 28 acres, is that what we're talking?
It's slightly less than that. Um, can you say it like that for me, check, I'm sure from the posters? It's not very reduced from that, but it is reduced enough that we could say we're away from the...
So, it'll still require a lot of mobilization?
Yes, there still will be a similar amount of enclosures.
And a question on the lights?
Mm-hmm.
You said they're motion-activated?
Yeah.
So, do your OX lights bother them going on?
They would, but they're shielded and directed downward, so they just illuminate the area right at the equipment pad, which is hundreds of feet away from the exterior of the... Yeah, uh, they can adjust the sensitivity of those too to, to reduce that. They're not gonna want that light coming on, there's no reason for it. There, it also will have a switch that can be turned off. So, if it were to become a recurring problem, they could just turn it off and then if somebody needs some of the site, they would turn on the electricity to that, uh, before they enter the site.
Do you know how many lights there are?
There's just one at each equipment pad area, yes.
Oh, okay.
So, there would be, there's two equipment areas, that would be one at each.
And where's the other equipment area?
It's down here in the south portion of the site, about midway down in that south portion of the on the left.
It's the same type building as the other one?
No, that only has, uh, more typical electrical equipment, like a transformer. They would be five feet high, the cabinets, they're enclosed cabinets that sit on concrete pad. This says, uh, 27, no, two acres in seven feet.
And that goes pretty close to the rock wall, so it's few frames...
The, where it turns is close to it, it's, it's about 75 feet west here in the north-south region of the rock wall.
Yeah, so there's a rock wall on the other side too, so...
We will be removing a portion that's down in the southern part of the site.
Any, any, any questions? The board?
Well, I have a question for the board, actually for four members of the board, unfortunately. If we were to close the public hearing right now, is the board gonna be held up and making a decision awaiting Mr. Smith's resubmital of whatever?
I would say so.
Okay.
No, because you can make it conditional on, on whatever items that, that are, that are still, that still need to be produced, which means the same thing, just, it just saves time as far as having another hearing. Not so much another hearing, but postponing it.
Continuing the hearing.
It's, it's gonna, it's gonna be contingent on condition based on the COMCON's decision already. And we'll be waiting on that before, before a permit can be...
Before the building permit, if we need to, yes.
Why don't we meet with them, is it, yeah, let's set up a meeting with them?
I'm hoping that it's the 26th of this month, I think it's their meeting day. I, I don't have confirmation from them yet on the date, it may be the first meeting in March.
I just, I would have to come back with all the information in front of us that we're asking for.
Those, those are separate jurisdictions, um, that, you know, it's separate from, from your issues.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm not talking about some of the things that, uh, Lillian spoke to as far as, uh...
Fire chief?
The, the fire chief. Uh, we, uh, the waiver for the fence was that we gotta prove that there, uh, the signage, the type of new panels that you were talking about, that they're a new model, I don't have a picture of that, just because that's the information that, that wasn't provided before. And that it's just being fair to the public, they can see that as part of the public hearing.
The cut sheet's the same, correct? There's, there's no...
It's very, very similar, yes. It's the same size module, it looks exactly the same.
But it's, it's got to be... But it's, it's gotten back to us regardless, so we can see it anyway, so...
And we'll have the most updated information than I have, you know, coming back years later and saying, it was supposed to be this, how come this doesn't look the same, or it isn't the same model? So we have all the updated records.
Kind of like you said, Jim, uh, sorry about that, if we make it conditional, we still need to get all the information before us anyways, so why not just wait till it's all in front of us? And then look at it by address, this is why I'm there.
Me too.
Dean, when could you provide most of that stuff for us?
None of that's very difficult to provide, so I would, I would think we're going to need, I think, provide some information.
So you'll contact fire chief and get him...
Yes, I can reach out and, and he's seen your earlier layout, so I don't imagine there's a lot to discuss with him.
So we can get his decision in writing.
I'm hap- yeah, I'm happy to do that.
I think the, the one that's going to be the trickiest to get is conservation due to timing.
Well, that, that one, I would hope that you can condition approval on. That's the way that every other town that we've appeared before is, because they're, they're separate jurisdictions. They're concerned about the, the wetland area and the buffer. That's, that's...
And that's maybe pretty much where they're doing the inside of, they're going to use, right?
More related to, in fact, to the adjacent properties and things like that rather than build that and...
And they're in the habit of not looking at anything until after we've approved it.
Yeah, we, we give them...
Although they did take the, uh...
If you try and wait for them, or they wait for you, then it, it will still open.
But all that's been, it moved it to add that buffer zone anyways.
Yes, so it's really a minimal impact that they're going to consider at this point.
Although they did take, COMCOM took the Red Rock.
Ahead of time, before us.
Yeah, they've, they've already had a little bit of discussion on it, I believe, so...
They can move forward first, it's, it's just a matter of how many...
Uh, well, I'd say if, if you get the information beforehand, you need with them beforehand, great. If not, then who would look at that? I don't have a problem with a conditional approval based on another board waiting for their decision. That's the problem with that.
What do we have going on on the twenty-fifth, anything? Of February?
Or our next meeting on the twenty-fifth? Um... Depends on what happens with the other public hearing tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, if we, if we do this into the next public hearing, you should hopefully have everything...
It shouldn't be a problem for me to provide the additional information that you've requested. If the board feel comfortable and I do have an opportunity to appear before the conservation commission on the twenty-sixth, and you want to continue your hearing for the first in, in March.
First meeting in, in March.
That's acceptable to us. I mean, we need all those approvals before we can move forward into the building.
So we're March eleventh? Is our first?
It's almost out a month from now.
Yep.
That's all right with me. I, I'd rather make sure that, that you're satisfied with what I provide to you. Uh, if we can't move forward tonight, it doesn't make a lot of difference going to the twenty-fifth or the twenty...
Will the conservation commission be able to give you your answer in one meeting?
I'm hoping that they will because of the nature of what we've got proposed and what you've pulled up there.
You just asked me for an approval of the wetland delineation?
Right, that, that will come with the RDA. Uh, so if anything was left, it might be that they want to conduct a site walk to offer a review of flagging that's out there. So it, it may take longer due to that, but our impacts again are very higher to the jurisdiction area. So we're hoping that we won't be able to appear before them once, but I can't count on that.
Did you by chance get your final report from National Bridge yet?
They take a very long time. It's a process, so that's all I can say. Um, a lot of times it follows by months after, after we get the board approvals, yes. Uh, it's a very slow process. They, they're doing detailed studies, uh, and they have to study the effect on, you know, their, their backbone transmission lines and distribution lines, so it takes, it takes some time.
What's the target date for, for breaking ground?
Well, that would depend on a lot of factors, but, um, at this point, this, this may not actually get constructed until twenty-twenty. Uh, it, it might be beyond the winter time into the next spring. If it's built this year, it, it would start in fall. So obviously that kind of a timeframe, at the earliest.
So let's, let's, let's be clear what we're asking for then, between now and our next hearing, so everybody's on the same page.
Okay, well, we want, this is the same.
Letter from the fire chief.
Yeah.
Stating...
One second. Yeah, it's on page two. On the top.
Uh, the access road turnaround should be dimensioned and reviewed by the fire department for adequacy.
So I'm just looking for approval from him that the road is... Okay.
Oh, you were gonna...
You, you did some meeting, uh, okay, there's...
Can you read my scribble?
Yeah. Number nine, the applicant should clarify how the site will be stabilized following the tree clearing and grubbing.
Oh, those, those two that are, are...
DS, S W P P P.
Say, okay, this number whatever in the stormwater answers that.
The fire department was number five?
Number five, okay.
Uh, number eleven, I see some notes here. It's unclear on, based on site conditions, why the proposed internal access route is located within the wetland buffer, you've taken that out.
Yeah, right.
Okay. So we don't have to do anything with that one?
No.
Isn't that correct?
It is correct. Um, they, they just need that and that, you know, I think that's...
What was it?
On media conservation.
Updated equipment cut sheet.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, that was part of this one.
You wouldn't want to provide the grade for the entrance because fire trucks might not make that though.
And the fire chief will get that.
It's on a grading line, so...
That's everything the fire chief will consider when he looks at it and make sure. He knows actually for the fire trucks and what they can and cannot go up. Uh, did, how are we gonna...
So meet with, uh, oops.
How are we gonna ensure this, that the information as far as, uh, contact information, all that is sent to the fire department?
There'll be a condition before he gets a certificate to operate.
Okay.
It's also, aside from the call out and the plan that you have for, it's also within this, within the SWIP document itself, the stormwater pollution prevention plan. There's a list of all the emergency contacts on that, or in the, in the appendix.
In one of the...
Should, should the fire department...
Yes, I, I can, uh, just note that in, in my response and include this additional information. But it would be that same, unless any of the changes between now and the time that the system is built, it would be that same information on the emergency, or on the ID sign at the entrance.
And how, how big is the sign that will be put up?
The ones that we've done in the past are about two by three. They're fairly large, I can provide pictures of some of the ones that we've done.
I'd just like to see a picture of it, sure.
To the board.
I'd like to see a picture of it.
It's, it's large enough to be visible, it's not so large it tries to be, you know, humorous.
Does the board also?
No, I think we need to vote to grant him the waiver so that he, for the fence.
Fence.
Can we do that now?
It's a waiver, so he would need to know that for sure before he, before he reflects it in his plan.
You can, yeah, do that.
Okay.
Yeah. Is there a motion from the board?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant Breezy Acres LLC, um, slash Borrego Solar Systems, Inc., a waiver from our fence by law of maximum six-foot height to seven feet high, seven feet, a seven-foot tall fence with the understanding that the fence will be elevated approximately six inches above grade to allow little furry things to run around. Uh, this is to comply with, as we, as I understand it, the electrical code.
The seven-foot fence is required in the electrical code. The conservation commission would normally ask us to put the wetland gap, so...
Yeah, just so we know why we gave the waiver.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
We may want to consider adjusting our bylaws to reflect electrical code for, for certain work.
Right. Because this was the first time we were aware, we were made aware of that.
Of the...
Seven-foot requirement.
That's, that's in our files.
Is it?
Yeah.
Oh, then we didn't need a waiver.
Well, it's in our values that it can't be higher than six foot. So you need a waiver to get it higher than that.
Right. What Jim was saying is we needed, we should probably put it, let our bylaws reflect that on a solar...
Then what code requires?
Look, like we did with, uh, ADA sidewalk pitches and...
That's in our regular...
Okay.
Picture of the...
I'd like to make another motion to continue this public hearing to March eleventh, two thousand nineteen, at five forty-five...
Yeah.
PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to make a motion to reconvene.
Oh, oh, we got another...
Whoops.
Well, I just want to reconvene and the next public hearing is at seven.
All right, the Mr. and Mrs. Carpenberg here with... So I'd like to make a motion that we reconvene the meeting.
For a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Wow, coming back.
So we have another area we're doing now?
Coming back. Yeah, we have an NR, yeah, South Street.
I don't think there's anybody here.
What's he doing?
Is it a wood shop that he's doing?
Yeah, that's...
It's not a storefront, is it? It's not going to be a storefront, that's house. Right?
Didn't he say he was wanting to make some, uh, things and sell them? Out of wood?
Is that a home occupation?
Pardon?
Is that a home occupation?
I would say so, yes, because he's going to be doing it out of his house. Does it say that?
No, it just says... Tell me where you go. It reads this on the bottom here, my name is Peter Harsin, my wife and I just moved from Chickahawney to Wabbe a few months ago. I'm a wood crafter, looking to see what I would need to do, start a small business retail, retail shop out of my home. So I guess we'd have to know more about it. Make a hand craft, a furniture, wood crafts, small retail shop in the garage to sell crafts.
Ethics.
Oh, Bill, I guess you gotta do one too.
Well, what should we do with this gentleman? Invite him in? More, more detail?
Well, Kathy's waiting for a response.
Famous?
Yeah. I need my zoning maps. Are you locked in to the...
No, I have...
No, oops, uh...
I don't, I don't have any of the zoning maps.
I have capital.
To tell where that one is, I believe it's outside of the business overlay.
Is it in the residential district?
Pardon?
Is it in the residential district?
Yes.
Is that yours there? Do you have your zoning maps there?
I do.
I wrote on the second one, so... What do I have?
I think it says yes, but with a special permit. Two years.
He's in, he's a bunch of...
So home occupation is allowed as of right in the RS district? Special permit in the RM and GB?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Special permit in the DC?
Which page are you on?
About seventeen.
Yeah, and so isn't you?
But he's talking about having a retail shop out of his house.
Going to retail as well?
That's, that's what the bottom of the email said, um...
Yeah, he's in residential district with that.
Starting a small business, a retail shop out of my home. Small resha- we, small retail shop in my garage to sell crafts.
The definition doesn't say anything about retail, you, so...
There's one, it's like the second or third house in the left.
Yeah, it would appear that he's out, he's out of the general, uh, sorry, the, uh, Business Park Overlay District.
Just out of it, yeah.
Yep. So he's out of it, but it, it's like one of those, one of those houses with a garage underneath, like, and it's built up over there.
Yeah, over, yeah.
So is it all happy?
Furniture stripping is not permitted.
Oh, sorry, what was that?
Furniture stripping.
Yeah, but if you go to page eighteen, the use of a portion of a dwelling or accessory building as an antique shop, gift shop, hobby shop, and such use is clearly secondary to the use of a premises as a dwelling, RS and RM. They need ZBA approval too.
Um, the house is, there's parking in the driveway, but other than that, they're going to be parking on the road.
That doesn't, that, that doesn't, uh...
Don't require a site plan?
Yeah, it does. Site plan, ZBA, and, uh, special permit, ZBA, and site plan approval. So it could be approved, but you, you, you know, how many vehicles do you plan on having in there at one time? They say, oh, two or three.
It's a shop, so, and he wants to sell things, so, yeah.
No, you just say, have, have them come in?
Can you say, we need more info? So you, you classify that as a home shop? Probably makes sense, yeah, yeah.
So...
Last word is a home shop.
It'd probably be a joint hearing, a, a joint meeting with ZBA, and ZBA would have to approve it. Well, typically, they won't approve anything until we've ta- taken a look at the site plan approval.
So...
Process.
We need to set up a joint?
We've done this once before over on, uh, Chickaby Street.
Yeah.
They had a little shop there, they were just gonna...
And we were assigned and stuff like that, a few years ago, I remember that.
Yep.
So, um, I can ask Kathy to set up coordination?
Yeah, we need more information. Do we have to have a meet with them beforehand?
Well, they have to apply.
Yeah.
If they don't know how to apply, then I guess they could come before us and we could explain to them what they need.
I think that's what they're looking for, some information.
We'll just ask them, if that's the case, then just ask them to come in and we can explain to them what...
Process and what they're trying to look at what they're like, just have to take.
So we want to ask them to come in.
Or to apply.
Planning for a meeting to discuss what is needed. After that, um, when he's got everything together, then we schedule a meeting.
You know, for someone trying to do something like this, it's, you gotta kind of walk them through what they're planning.
Yeah.
Explain to them what, what you're...
Um, so we all got our little ethics packages?
Yeah.
You have to do the thing online?
We can't do it online, I think you do it online, right? Just provide the certificate, right?
Yep. Yep. And it has to be done by March twenty-ninth.
Okay.
It's right on the letter there.
That's what they say. I think I got mine done in July last year.
Um, do we have anything else for discussion? So, wait a minute. Did you sign it?
Uh, no.
Right here.
We're hiding it. I'm going to let this down before I knock it in.
Okay.
Now I can see back.
Pardon?
Now I can see back.
Could you put it back up?
Does the Building Commissioner generally rule on whether uses are allowed before it gets to the planning board?
He's supposed to.
So I'm wondering, maybe you should refer this question to him to get the official decision as to how to proceed.
I think I suggested that before to Kathy and I...
Because the zoning enforcement officer really is the one who should make that call as to what permits are required. But I think, you know, you've made a reasonable interpretation, but if he comes up with something different...
Different than...
So we should first add the building inspector.
We could do that.
I would say so, yeah.
We could do that. If they want more information, they can go to us. You know, we've got... Because I would imagine that's what he's going to tell them and they're going to ask, well, what does that mean?
Right, I mean, you could still invite them in.
But that's the first step, that's the first step.
Come in first, talk to you about it.
Yeah.
So that's simply go to the building inspector for guidelines?
For zoning interpretation.
Maybe, maybe this will be the first person in Wambe that receives our permitting guide.
Yeah, all right.
Great.
So, um, they don't necessarily, one would assume that once the building inspector talks to them, they don't have to come in here for discussion first.
They don't have to, but it might be helpful.
Maybe they have questions that couldn't have been answered there or something.
And then we'll schedule a public hearing after that.
So would you do that concurrently with the Z B A?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, did we have anything else that was... Let's see, Dollar General, did you want, you have to set up a public hearing?
What?
Dollar General.
Did they submit an application?
They, yeah, they did, you got it. Paid it February fourth.
Who did?
Dollar General.
Okay.
It's, it's listed as D G series.
Next to C and G machine.
Okay.
Did you get that, Kathy?
Actually, I think it's...
We have to schedule the public hearing.
Does that one need to be done by March fourth or...
March fourth. Bill, what was that one, remember?
That was... Oh.
That was, here we are, that one is...
Red Rock Solar was played March fourth.
So Kathy has to get the other big clock. Of course, it's stated in the guidelines because their application was submitted, we sent it from the...
So I think, you know, the options were to move your meeting date to the fourth so you could meet the deadline or ask for an extension to March eleven, which would be your goal. Date, Kathy needs to go tomorrow.
Why are they asking for an extension?
What if the applicant says no?
They're going to do it to, to find out tomorrow. Unless he says no, we lose the march four.
But there's no time.
Well, it has to be paid for tomorrow, so Kathy got to make, she has to go with April tomorrow, which means they need to arrange for tomorrow. That would accept.
No, it has to be placed an ad in the paper about November twelve.
Well, I think that's, that's not going to happen regardless.
But in order to stay within sixty-five days?
Yes, yes, sixty-five days.
After, after they submit it, they're going to...
I understand that, but tomorrow is February twelfth, so there's not going to be an ad paid for tomorrow.
There's no credit tomorrow.
So you, you could have it go ahead and prepare the ad and submit it and then you can get the extension till it was, was called the ad for a week or two.
So, are we there?
Remember, the, the woman from representing, came in from, came in from Kinebahn, and this is when we were in the middle of this whole debacle with the moratorium, and nobody knew where it stood, but I don't believe it was ever, at least I don't remember hearing it, that this had been already applied for, or an application had been submitted.
They, um, are we on the same wall? Or you're talking about Lions? You're talking about Red Rock, I'm talking about Dollar General.
But Red Rock's the one that we're under the gun for, right?
Right.
Okay, I'm there.
Okay.
All right, so let's, let's back this up a little bit. We're obligated to have a hearing?
Within sixty-five days of submission or acceptance of, of the plant, of the application. Kathy Hussein was submitted on September twenty-eighth. So I think it could be solved if you get the applicant to request an extension.
Yeah, the applicant has to request it.
Correct.
In writing?
Yes.
Yes.
Why would they?
Right, why would they ask for an extension?
It's only a week and that's your normal meeting night.
But if we don't, if they don't ask for an extension, doesn't this pass by right?
Yep.
Well, it puts you in a gray area for sure.
Yeah, well, that's one.
I don't think it's constructive approval, but it gets a little messy.
You should have it scheduled, so it's the fourth?
March fourth.
See, I don't even...
The day you go in.
But I don't even know how she can post it for the fourth.
Well, she will get the ad in tomorrow. And then it'll appear two weeks prior to the meeting.
Well, I see, she says the ad has to be in the paper tomorrow.
She's got to, she's got to prepare the ad and send it.
She's got to, she's got to send it in tomorrow, so it means the cutoff.
And then it'll be published next week.
I, I would recommend that we...
We do that then.
We do it on the fourth.
Yeah.
Is one available on the fourth?
If we can, five thirty, we play on the agenda for first thing.
I will be, but you can open a hearing and close, or continue it, rather. And then we'll, we will have met our obligation.
Right.
So we have to vote, right?
Then you'll still be in March eleven because you just continued the other hearing to that date.
Right.
True.
Just so I understand this, are we, we are trying to appease the applicant by meeting within the sixty-five day timeframe?
We're not to, we're trying to follow the guidelines.
Right. However, and we can, we can open the hearing.
Hear, hear the applicants.
Well, wait a minute, why hear the applicants? Because if this is going to have to be a super majority again, and a member of the board is not going to be here, we run into a problem down the road with the super majority.
We can watch it on G C A N.
Right, so, so on the video, they can follow that.
Is it indeed true that you can only miss, a, a board member can only miss one meeting during a hearing process? They're saying yes.
Of anything that's substantial is, that is discussed.
Each opening of the hearing, they have to be there except for one, and they can watch a video of that meeting that they missed.
All members have to be present at the opening of the hearing?
No, as long as, that could be one meeting that somebody misses.
I see, okay.
But you can only miss one, huh?
Right.
And then you can't vote, right?
If you miss more than one, you can't vote.
Okay. I'm, I'm making a...
We, we don't have a choice.
But you're still having, you only need four, you need four people to vote.
Right.
So you can still meet the four in the choir, but all four have to vote in favor to approve. But you can still, still do it.
Okay, do we have to make a motion to have Kathy do this? No, let's just have Kathy advertise the hearing for, you want to, you want to do it at five o'clock?
Five o'clock will work for me better because I'm on a meeting at six thirty, so.
You don't count. Rob?
Sorry.
March fourth?
Bill?
Yep.
You? Okay, five, uh, five o'clock, March fourth, public hearing for Red Rock. Please. Okay.
Five, yeah.
I... Yep.
And Bill, are you going to help Kathy with it?
Sure, I can...
Publication, getting a public hearing, right?
Yep.
Um, the sort of public hearing for Red Rock?
Yeah, I did one on four something.
Five P M on March, you know, four.
Monday, March four.
At five o'clock?
So you can beat the traffic.
And it doesn't have to be anything else on the agenda. This is, we're holding this meeting specifically for this, so...
Right.
We'll make sure that, so if you get in, get out.
Well, we could, we could have some of our regular business on there if we're on it.
If you wanted to, but I'm just saying if he's got...
We don't have, we don't necessarily...
A different meeting.
We don't have to take other appointments, correct. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we close the meeting again to open the public hearing for Grammy Solar LLC. Reconvene this meeting at the end of that public hearing.
This is now seven oh three, we have the continuing hearing for Grammy Solar LLC.
We've got to put it to vote. In the second.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, before we discuss the time.
Well, we're three minutes back.
I'm sorry.
So we're, uh, call, mean, called meeting to continue hearing for Grammy Solar LLC of one oh one Summer Street, second floor, Boston, Mass. Zero two one one zero to amend the special permit and site plan approval by the planning board on December eleventh, two thousand seventeen. The application previously received approval to install three point zero megawatt DC large scale ground oven solar photovoltaic facility on approximately fifteen acre portion of approximately a hundred eight acre parcel of land. The applicant is proposing to modify the layout to improve arrays and to change the racking system of one array that will allow modules to rotate to follow the sun throughout the day. All work remains within agricultural, agricultural areas and no new tree removals proposed. The generation capacity of the project remains unchanged at three point zero megawatts. The project is located at one thirty-four South Street, assessment parcel ID five dash B dash three dash two, five dash B dash four, five dash B dash seven. The property is owned by Leonard and Bruce Laflamme of one thirty-four South Street, Grammy, Mass. Also known as Dixon Farm, also fronting on Morgan and E Street, which is located within a residential, single-family zoning district.
Mr., Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I, uh, I'd like to know if we ever were able to resolve with town council on the... Which one, which one would take precedent?
We have not heard back from them on that.
Okay.
So it's, is, if this is, which one is, I don't know, which one is approved? So if this is approved, does this supersede the original ones?
Correct.
It's kind of a moot point. The only time, the only time we were concerned about is if there was a moratorium in place and there isn't.
But then there's a question, is it enough of a change to be...
That's, that's, that's our decision, not the town council's decision.
Okay.
So, if I understand this, we could have two, two different solar projects for the same parcel approved, technically?
No.
No? So this one, if we approve, if we approve this one?
The modification, that it stands with the modification.
That is, that supersedes the first one?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're all clear.
I'm Mike Scott from L U D A, that's Nexant's intent, that's why they have asked us to refund that they want to, as they explained last meeting. They want to swap off the panels on the south, southern or the western side of the, of the sites. As we discussed previously, this is essentially the same project or same, same layout, but that's the one that you approved previously. This is the one that was footprint changed and the type of equipment changed. So when we were here, um, two weeks ago, aside from the discussion about the moratorium and all that, we presented that, um, the change was that they were going from the, the static to the rotating or articulating. So we're still seeing the same plant. The other thing that came up, of course, was, um, one of the residents from Morgan Street was here, she was not planted previously. So, her mom is here and Mr. Gagnon is on this, is here. We had originally had, you're looking at, it's part of the site now, what, within the... We originally ended the plantings about at this point on the northern end of the Gagnon property, so we extended them up past, um, her property. And then, um, the guy hasn't talked to Nexant. If you remember a year ago or a year and a half ago, there was a woman, Julie Boishman, who was here with me. And they had talked about replacing arborvitae with Canadian hemlock. That was the guy who requested. We had suggested from our end that, um, I know from personal experience, Woolley Adulgin has done a number on the hemlocks in my yard.
I'm, I'm sorry, the what has done a number?
Woolley Adulgin is a pest that essentially eats the hemlocks and pretty much defoliates them, it's rampant in this part of the country. And we had suggested either a spruce or a cypress or, I'm forgetting the fourth, but another species as opposed to the arborvitae. And so Nexant had said, you know, the Leland cypress would be appropriate. The Gagnons really like the, the hemlock. It just requires spraying, so they can be either, either one. We showed cypress on here, but they, they're adding up that it'd be, that'd be the, um, sorry, the Canadian hemlock, so...
And you can accommodate that?
We can make that change, yeah, for the...
So that it's going to be green all the way up, just up here, or all the way down to the bottom?
You know, it, it'll be green all the way, you know, it's a full, it's a hedge forming type tree and it, but eventually, like the one in my yard, it's, there's not a lot left, it's a sixty foot tree, it's above twenty feet of foliage. It's eaten its way up in ten years, it's pretty much killed it. The person we bought from had to spray it and it took off.
So it, it eventually...
But these, these can, these, these will be a, a tree that will grow, but it'll be from the ground up. It's not a, there's not a canopy that sits up four or five feet. So it'll be a hedge formed.
How, how big are they to start with?
They're, we still have the, the same three to five, so that they're three to five feet and they grow in this condition. Their, one of their concerns was that this is a part shade location because really you're only getting the south, but eastern to southern exposure. But once it turns a corner, it's full shade, so... We talked, I talked to three landscape architects, three of the certain landscape architects in the office, and they, they're convinced that any of those species would be okay in this, it's fairly wet here. It's also fairly sandy, but there is the shade. One of the concerns our landscape architect pointed out to me is the way too wet is typically out by the state or northeastern when you have little bad storms, obviously. That can do a number on the trees if they're open, so unprotected on the side, which they would be, you have the whole fence of the, the field. But Mr. Gagnon had pointed out that he's seen some of these successful not far from his home and he's confident they'll do well here, so... It's roughly the same cost at installation for all the plants we're talking about. They're more expensive than the arborvitae. Their concern would be that the cedar, the hemlock be sprayed probably.
So...
Annually, every other week there to keep the...
And you're willing to do that as part of the condition?
They would have to do that as part of the, of the operation. I mean, they have to at least inspect it annually, whether it is to spray it annually, it needs to be looked at, which they would have to do anyway as part of the maintenance program.
Is, is there a reason why you feel so strongly about that particular species? Given that it's, it's, it's...
The, our providing is, I was told by a class for us, I'm aware...
The, uh, our providing, so told by a class for us, I have to move very here, uh, needs one hundred percent exposure to sun to be successful long term, uh, so he suggested a, a hemlock. He showed me an example three houses away from me that they, they put in hemlocks several years ago and they're, they're quite tall and healthy, um, so that's why I picked a hemlock.
Don't they tend, don't they have a tendency to defoliate at the lower?
Well, that's what can happen with the, with the, with the bog, that's, that's one of the concerns.
Okay, well, as long as you understand that, I guess it's your call, if you're willing to accommodate it.
So you maintain them as a hedge or would you allow them?
No, they allow them to grow, but they are a hedge form, I mean, they will grow together and it will turn into a wall effect, I mean, they can be, they can be maintained as a hedge and trimmed and boxed out, but that's not the intent here, no. But they're, they're a suitable screening plant, that's-
And that would be a staggered?
The staggered, the same orientation we had in the space, they feel part roughly in a, in a offset.
Zigzag, yeah, okay.
And back to, uh, sorry about, the woman that was here last time?
Right.
You, you've accommodated that too, you moved the-
So her lot is here, and I apologize, um, can, um, that this is their property from this lot, like, so we've extended it up to her northern lot, and you, we're not seeing the entirety of the Gagnons, but they continue, the plantings continue down with several hundred-
Are, are you changing the tree at that point or is it the same, you're gonna plant the same thing?
Was that, we were just carrying the same one all the way up, yeah.
So all of the plantings on that-
On this side would be the hemlock, and everything over there is the arbor, uh, on the northeast for the other maple is the arborvitae. And then there's some replanting along Morgan Street to accommodate the request of the conservation permission, where some maples are coming down, they're gonna be replaced once the construction entrance is done. There's no need for the big turning radius, so there's gonna be some, uh, replanting south of there to sort of create a little bit more of a buffer again from Morgan Street. Right now there's sort of a barway there, but it's gonna get wider during construction and we'll fill it back in.
Any other questions?
I, you said there was a cypress as well, there's the arborvitae, the cypress, the hemlock?
The, the, the cypress, the hemlock, and I forget which spruce, did you?
Okay.
I sent the email, so.
I think for something that's gonna last, that you might wanna reconsider your choice in that if it does become infested, once you have the infestation in one tree, I would have to imagine that it's already spread to the others.
That's one of the concerns, but if it's been successful down the road and they got a healthy stock and it, you know.
I'm Ben Axon from Nexant, uh, representing, because Julie and us couldn't make it tonight, but what I would say to that is just that, you know, I understand your concern about arborvitae, um, but the, the cypress is a similar looking plant to the hemlock, um, you know, it also, it bushes out, it does well in shade, you know, the landscape architects have looked at this, um, you know, it's our preference not to be spraying on sites if they don't have to, uh, certainly if you want to go with the, uh, cypress here, or if you want to go with the hemlock here, we can spray it, uh, but it seems like the, you know, from my perspective, the cypress is a, a compliment to similar thing, um, without the issue of, you know, there being an infestation of, uh, you know, bugs that are, that are getting it. If, you know, if you feel strongly about the hemlock, you can certainly go with the hemlock, but the, uh, cypress seems to be a pretty good solution here.
My main concern is fast growth, because if you're putting six footers now, that's about three feet shorter, my eyeballs open up in the fields, so we're talking next number of years before it even gets, I can't see the fields, so the faster the better, I really don't care about the name, um, and that's the bottom line.
Sure, you know, the growth rate- I know, I know, I'm gonna feel great. I, I guess one thing is, we, right now they show cypress, they're gonna get a screen, it's going to be acceptable to them.
So, so they-
One more thing you guys might tell to your, your guardian, you know, that there already is a tree line there.
Yep.
And it's gonna shade your new trees half a year, they're not having the sun, so that should be a factor in your consideration.
Right, we talked about that with our landscape architects, they looked at the, the aspect, if you will, this is sort of the southeast exposure, is the principal exposure.
So to the board, we don't really care what's there for trees as long as it's one of the four ones he had mentioned, I think it's more concerned to the homeowners that are there and you're fine to grant, sell it wherever they want anyway, so.
Yeah, there's a quantity and a layout here that's gonna be whatever they want, I mean.
But we should mention what kind of plant in the decision.
Well, they are, that's what they've got to spec, this is a hemlock.
Yeah, so there's a hemlock, spruce, cypress, or, and we ruled out the arborvitae, so those are the three arborvitae species, and I don't know a variety of each, other than the Canadian hemlock and Leland cypress, I don't remember which spruce we said.
And it, it, they're, I mean, they're gonna, they're happy to do whatever you want, and I think just, they mentioned some concerns with one of the ones that you, you would like, so just understand that that could be a problem down the road, but, uh, honestly, I think it's whatever you want, they will, they'll plant, so.
Do you normally require replacements if trees die within a couple of years in your decision?
I would say so.
I would think, you know, you certainly want the applicant to replace any trees that are diseased within, say, three years.
There's always a one year, well, not always, but typical landscape, there's a one year
warranty anyway, and then you look out a few years and, if, if, if you get the right
installation and healthy stock, they shouldn't find them.
Someone installs them like-
They're gonna be a little nursery, they're gonna be acclimated, they're already covered enough for the sun.
The treaty case risks, any disease, it's gonna prevent that, so.
Yep.
Any other questions?
It's, um, Green's a little, this update here.
Okay.
That's something, and it fell out of my head.
I just stopped.
I don't see it anymore.
So our decision has to, um, say that this will, it has to tie in with the other one. Let me get my little notes. Supersede the previous-
Decision on the, the rule on December eleven.
Yeah, we'd have to say that so that the newer one would be the one-
Right, that's what they want, they, they want to build this-
Right.
-project, which is, the concern last time was the, the moratorium pass.
So in the, in the decision, it should reference that this is-
We're approving a modification.
But it's, but we also wanna say that it supersedes the other plant.
I think approving a modification already does that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then you do reference the plan, the date of the, the set of plans on, the date.
Right.
So if you humor me on this and just explain, you have your decision already made, already, in the Hampshire County needs, everybody's happy. Now we're making a change and we're gonna say, this now is how the layout is gonna be. It has to tie into this other one.
They're gonna have to go back up to Hampshire County and, and re-register the modification, the new plan, correct?
Yeah, and if the new decision will be recorded-
And the decision is reported as well.
Yeah, yeah.
And it could refer, it should refer back to the other one, but, and we brought new set of plans to a, a date because it has the additional plantings we're gonna need with Bill, or I can get to Kathy, whatever.
Why is that?
Now, your road in, you said you were going to use a road that was already there?
There's an opening there and it needs to widen for the, for the, for the, during construction, um, they've blocked, the, the flanks have blocked off the entrance because people were dumping there, so there's an opening, it's been maintained, but they got holders in front of it, so they would remove those, widen, take some maples, which were approved for, um, removal by the conservation commission, because it's within two hundred feet of the brook, which makes it within the riverfront area. Post-construction, they're gonna tighten that back up and then plant maples in the area, there on that area back up.
So-
So it's still, it's still accessible for fire, it's still accessible for pickup trucks.
So you have an entry on both ends, is that right?
That's for, yeah, well, this, this entry, so the entry here, this, there's a driveway that comes, that comes in from, um, East Street, but there's a wetland system, so the, uh, there's a, the pole line goes out, the power goes out to the pole line on the north side of East Street. This driveway doesn't get you into the site, but the Nexant has legal rights through the Leflance property this way, so they can come in off South Street, not for construction, but if they need to maintain, and fire can obviously access from either direction, so.
But mostly with your construction, it will come in?
All the construction is gonna, yeah, the intent is to come off of, um, uh, Morgan Street, and the intent is to come up, go right in and go left out because of the, the way that, um, how tight, the road's narrow and they have large trucks, so. And trucks are using this route right now, uh, because, uh, this, this entrance, I don't know, it's pretty, pretty wide down here, or that intersection's pretty wide. Yeah, so once there, once the larger, uh, we bought a W B sixty-seven, which is the longest wheelbase tractor trailer that's out on the road right now, it's not a chain though, um, and that, that's why they have to widen, it's final improvement, then it gets closed back up.
Now, um, you don't have a brochure or specs or whatever for that new panel, right? Or it's not in the package here?
We-
Is that something you can just supply us with to-
Yeah, I thought, I thought it was with it, I kept it to Kathy, um, do have, I did get it through the effort, so I know that I can get it.
Yeah, just so our records are complete.
Yep, yeah, so the northern one will remain as original, of course, it will be the one people, I can get that to Kathy.
Did you wanna see those beforehand, or something, or?
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm okay, you're okay? Our audience, too.
As I mentioned last time, the new, the newer equipment is lower profile, it's actually, sits down a few feet lower than, at the highest point than what had originally been composed here, so they're, I'm not gonna say more, but there's, there's a different configuration than what it is now, two feet or so.
So just a curiosity question, what made you want to put the revolving, is that what we're applying?
Rotating, well, they're not, first time.
Tractor included, you know, it's hard for it, it's the, the tracking system.
And it works better on the lower part than on the upper part?
Yeah, um, I'm, I'm not sure the-
This is perfectly flat, this terrain, and this, this actually slopes away, so I think Chris was talking last time about the fact that the tracking system's lower than flat terrain, whereas, and this, this hill actually slopes the wrong direction, it slopes to south, to, north to south, and south to north, so.
You can't just restop the hill?
They're probably within two hundred feet of the river.
Try to avoid those, maybe try to avoid those kinds of sites, but, yeah, um, yeah, herbivores, it's expensive, um, but that's, so this, this is more efficient in that sense on a flat site, so they, they decided to go.
So flat sites, they're the rules.
Yeah, they get more, more of the sun out, so produce more energy.
Yeah, there's an additional cost of installation and maintenance, but that could be outweighed by additional production, so that's a trade off.
Makes sense. It's a lower profile too, so.
Yeah, exactly.
Glad you got to see it.
Now, are those gonna be part of our tree line that our trees are not gonna shade?
Yeah, that, that has, that's a big part of how their, um, their layout sits, you know, they need about two to three times just the height of a tree for shading, right? That's sort of gonna stand on the southeast, and so they're, they're pretty far out, you know, um, these are a little closer, these are actually a little closer than what we're used to seeing, but they must've, must've assessed that, and they also can negotiate with the landowner where they can put them, so if they say you gotta use that portion of site.
Yeah, I mean, we don't, we don't design them so that they're never shaded, because that would just be unnecessarily restrictive, it would basically design it so that within a, a ten to two, ten a.m. to two p.m. window any day of the year, you're getting full sun, and then, um, you know, if there's a, you know, early, early morning hours or late afternoon hours, there's a little bit of shade and you can live with that. And, you know, if you can find a site where there's no shade, then that's even better, if you're talking about a percentage of school percentage of the offer at that point.
Is there a residence on that farm that you know?
There's a residence here, yep.
Is that the owner?
That's right, yeah, okay. He, he owns all five, there's five parcels, I think, up there farm, so these sit on two parcels.
No, so that's why you put it over to the side, 'cause there's-
Yeah, I think, this is the orchard that, that he's maintained, and that was the original location, that was, that was from here north, but they don't want to lose the orchard, and this is their, um, sort of, that's sort of their operation, where their equipment is, and they have, um, they have growing down in this area, and then that's their top area, so the tree, this has been, not been used at least in the year or two that I talked to the farmer, but this area's all been actively farmed in the last, you know, it's right now, I don't know if they're doing anything next season, they won't have this, I don't know what they did last season out here.
And he will retain ownership of the land?
That's correct, yeah.
The land is-
People are not able to take.
Any other questions? Anything we, uh, audience? Any further?
No, no. The apple here kills me.
Oh, yeah, it does.
Okay.
No, I'm all set.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't see your board before you work.
Is there a motion? I think we should make a motion to close the hearing.
I'll second your motion.
Were you making a motion or were you suggesting that someone make a motion?
I made the motion.
Okay, Bob is second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve this? Are we waiting, we're not waiting for additional information or to vote, at least to vote on it?
The, the spec sheet he's gonna provide.
Okay.
And then Bill, you're gonna be writing the, uh, decision.
Yes, so it's a modification, so I will reference the previous decision, uh, attach it, I think, uh, and then whatever other changes we want to include, uh.
Now, what about the, um, we, I think we have put in the other one, we have two years to get this done, or at least started, and that, are you gonna still be on that clock or are you gonna be in?
Well, I think we'll be on the new clock.
The new clock.
The new clock?
Right.
So we need to put that in there, the date is to when it's-
Right, this is, this starts a new clock for.
And it wouldn't hurt to reiterate that a, a certificate to operate will not be issued until all conditions-
Okay.
Are met, and that's more for our code enforcement officer versus, we've, we've already had that happen to us once already.
Not with the current code enforcement officer.
No, 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 no.
A previous one.
And then we had to go back and backtrack, so.
That's not uncommon.
Now, do you have, um, a third party inspector doing the construction?
No.
That the applicant pays for?
No, no, that's up to the, uh, the building inspector, code enforcement.
Most communities have an engineering representative on site or, you know, does site visits to make sure that it's built according to the plan, um, you don't require that.
In this instance, Bill, there's no stormwater, ruins or any of those things, where there are often, so, yeah, I mean, what is-
I think it might be something we can, should consider in the future, but-
I was thinking that, I didn't know we necessarily had that option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There might, there might be some for the-
Well, well, we do that with subdivisions, we, we usually bring in a third party to do that, but those are a little bit more, uh, complicated than, than what we're doing.
And if you're gonna accept a public road, that's a different, it's private development, but other communities do have a peer review that watches not just the design, like Ty and Vaughn did, but, you know, I, this site has, other than some tree work, it has no great, so it's not a-
Shouldn't take you any time at all, I said it all.
What's that?
Shouldn't take you any time at all, I said it all.
Well, it's pretty amazing how fast they move up, actually, it really is.
Do you have definitive con term approval?
Yeah, yeah, they should, yeah, so we're scheduled, we're scheduled to go back tomorrow night, they've already, we've already presented this, but we're supposed to go back tomorrow night and vote, and they already canceled their meeting based on the forecast, so, but there's an order of condition that's recorded, uh, and, and it's, the changes are that we've actually moved this array farther from the wetlands, you know, the, the expansion is all beyond, the red lines have fallen for some, this was the point that we took to the Gagnon, so there was no change here, we actually moved stuff away, but they wanted to have a vote, their process is similar, they can accept this as a field change, or they could just require reopening of the hearing, our contention there is that this is mine, and it's outside their jurisdiction, so that's what the things are gonna find, they just have to have the copy of the plans to make a vote, which the intention is to
They just have to have the copy of the plans to make a vote, which the intention is to do it tomorrow night, which will be-
And it won't be this week?
No, I moved, I, I moved to twenty nine, I think.
A little bit of snow.
I think they kicked it out two weeks from, I think it's twenty six.
And I think we wanna add the condition of spraying if the hemlocks-
For the first two years?
Right.
Yeah, yes, text them.
So, it has to know what the species is.
Yeah, so right now, the plan was, I'm gonna leave these if I can, unless you don't wanna believe the view, Bill, I could send them to Kathy. But, um, they have a new date, and they have that extension, that's the, that's the change.
They sent you the T E S.
Okay, back to the back, what, actually, I gave the disc, I brought the disc, but, whatever.
That's a better hit.
Yeah, so, that's, that's awesome, thanks, that's awesome.
If anybody else wants it, take it, it's right.
Yeah, it's like, it's a good one.
Oh, separate, yeah, we gotta, and I'll look back and-
It would be, I mean, we should probably find out when's the best time for, to be sprayed as well, and to make that part of the condition.
Yeah, we can, I, I can get some information on that from all I can remember.
Yeah, so.
If that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, so we'll be, be sure to be in spray, and then be in spray at the right time.
So, uh, would you like me to prepare this for the next meeting for you to review and sign it then, or do you, um, just commit and sign it when it's ready? You know, which do you wanna, you have it in front of you to vote to sign it, or just?
Yeah, well, if you, if you can prepare for next meeting, then we can, well, you won't-
And then hopefully you'll have, uh-
If you want, it's-
No, I think we should vote, vote on it tonight with those conditions, and then sign, then we don't, we've already closed the hearing.
Right.
Boy, I, I'll be very honest with you, I am not really in favor of this tree spraying maintenance, and I mean no disrespect to your decision.
Yeah, but the hearing's closed.
But I'm just, I'm seeing issues down the road. Number one with the insecticide, herbicide, whatever it may be, a high groundwater table, other neighbors complaining about potential spraying. Uh, we don't have to worry about wells on Mo- on that part of Morgan Street, because we are town water or South Avenue water. But I, I just see some issues coming about.
I wish you had said something before we closed the hearing.
Well, that's why we're discussing it, no?
Yeah, amongst ourselves.
But then again, and if they planted the trees themselves and sprayed it themselves, then there's no answer.
Yeah, but chances are that the average property owner is not gonna take a one hundred and fifty foot, or whatever, property line, and make a huge investment cash layout for trees that have to be maintained.
Let's, let's think about it this way. More than likely, those trees will be healthy for the next fifteen, twenty years, which will exceed the, the, the life expectancy of the, of this solar.
I think they have a twenty or twenty, typically it's twenty, twenty-five.
Your, your personal-
My situation?
Yes.
Yeah, the trees, I mean, I bought a house that was built in the nineteen twenties, and the trees was probably there when it, you know, when the whole went up, but it's, it's been defoliating. It's been defoliating every year for the last-
But there are, there are trees, as they mentioned, and I know the house they're talking about down a little from there.
Yeah.
And that they're, the trees are, I mean, they're, they're grown.
I'm just throwing that out for the board's consideration.
Yeah, I only brought it up because of my personal experience, I wouldn't have known this, I'm not that landscape guy, I just mentioned it-
I mean, right, I think it depends, like you said, if they're, if they're put in right, they're taken care of, you don't, you don't know if they're done right.
And if it can't be done because the, all the hemlock side with disease are now getting gone, and this is a healthy stock, you might be fine, because they don't have to spray it, it's not the worst part.
Is this the ones that, are these the trees that weren't allowed out of Worcester County?
No, 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 that's a totally different issue.
Okay.
That's the, that's the-
Well, there is this test-
Yeah, the age one.
Yeah.
There is this test of moving albatross.
Albatross, yeah.
And that's moving eastward, right, so it's-
It's been in this area since, by my Google research the other day, talking about landscape artifacts, it's been since the nineteen, it's not, this is not a new occurrence.
Nice, well, I mean, are, are everybody's prepared to vote?
Oh, I'll make a motion.
Well, do, do we still wanna go over what's going in the decision?
Yes, but we'll talk, we'll talk the planting right now, so that's fine.
Yeah, if there's anything else. Was there anything else wanting?
I mean, before he makes a motion to-
I was gonna make a, a motion on approval.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, they, uh, we usually get the wording or whatever for the, the conditions set first, so.
Yeah, I mean, I love it.
So, right now, the, what's on the plans is the cypress, which, you know, is not herbiviti, but also not, you know, not hemlock doesn't have the issue. So, you could either, you know, approve as is, approve with the condition that we go and refer with the landowner to see if you want something else. Um, but then if the landowner chooses hemlock, then you wanna put in a condition saying that that will be sprayed, I assume.
Well, the hea- the, the hearing's closed, unfortunately, so. If, if, if someone feels strongly about putting a different species in, other than what the homeowner, the abutter, wants, then that's fine. We can vote on it, and whether or not we approve it or not's another, another story, but-
As a condition.
As a condition, but my, my thinking on this is, we've had the discussion, the homeowner, the, or the abutter, really wants this particular species, so. And, and the operators are willing to-
Accommodate.
Accommodate it.
So, we add in hemlocks to the decision.
What you did, right.
And what else?
Uh, I think it's your call, if you wanna stay with hemlocks, that's fine, if you wanna go with cypress or screws, you can do that as well.
Unless someone feels strongly different, and they wants to bring it to a vote, I'm okay with the hemlocks. I mean, that's what the, the abutters like, that's what they want, I think we-
Yeah, so it just meant-
The honor, their thoughts.
Hemlocks, they have to be-
Okay.
Okay.
Six foot tall to begin with?
Three to five feet.
Five, they're gonna be five, and they're gonna, that's because they're combined in a certain range.
Okay.
That's what's bad, that was on the original approval, everything was that size.
And the, um, construction ask we start at that little clause, it's usually two years?
Correct, that's in the bottom.
So, that's, we gotta start the clock ticking in there.
Do we have any, any operation hours, or anything like that, set up? Uh, yeah, we've done it before, so it's, it's not outside.
That was already in the original decision, so that shouldn't have to change.
Right, so that's all.
So, I'm gonna make a motion to approve this modification, based on Bill reading off the conditions. If you would please, just so we're all clear.
Okay.
And then, and then, a second, someone can second it.
So, we're gonna approve the, the new plan with the data, um, which includes the tracking rack system.
Correct.
The extension of the tree planting line further to the north to accommodate the abutters. Um, we are going to, uh, allow the hemlocks to be planted in lieu of the herbivities on the previous plan. Um-
Just in that one?
In that one section, right. Um.
I'm gonna skip it.
Uh, that, any of the trees that don't survive after three years will be replaced by the applicant. That's what I have.
Jeff.
And the, the applicant will do the necessary maintenance on the trees, i.e., s- spraying.
Spray, right.
Are we all set?
My motions are, my motions-
Am I voting on this, since we started before I, uh?
No.
No, I'm not voting.
I don't see why, I don't see why he can't.
Did you see the, uh, hearing, the first opening of the hearing?
He wasn't here for the first part.
For the modification.
When was he here to begin the modifications of?
Well, yeah, that's right, we're voting on a modification, and you've been here for all the hearings.
Okay, yeah, he's been around the modifications, and I'm giving them exactly when it started.
Even though he was, even though Rob wasn't here back for our December seventeenth-
Right.
Correct.
Whatever.
Right.
Decision two years ago, year and a half.
Right. But what's all we're voting on now is the modification to the original.
I will second the motion made by Jim.
Yeah, I don't think you finished it.
I did.
Okay, I didn't hear it.
Okay, I made a motion, I made a motion to approve the modification as presented. With, with, with the new panels, per plans, with the conditions that Bill just read off.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Somebody opposed? No?
Thank you.
Was that a five oh or four?
Five oh. I heard everybody say, no, it's, no one's opposed, I didn't hear anybody say they're opposed.
When you said, no, I didn't know what that meant, you would already know.
Oh, no.
Does that make a difference, that it's four or four? E D four.
Right, E D four.
Oh, okay.
So, so now, Bill will provide us with the letter-
Yep.
Of conditions. They'll get signed off, and then, and then it can go to them, and then.
I didn't hear-
And then it goes, then it goes to them, so that they can, they can, uh, take that, record it with their plan.
Right, so, with the special permit, after you've signed it, it goes to the town clerk, is a twenty day, you know-
Appeal period, sure.
And then after that, she signs a letter of no appeal.
No appeal.
And then they refer.
That's right.
We still have this A and R plan, Mike.
I'm just gonna-
Hey, Mike?
You gonna recuse yourself, or, or leave?
Leave, it's not.
All right, sorry about that.
Right, so this is taken by two of the parcels that are raised. Thought you asked us to be quiet without, without. We were waiting for you to do this. Do you require color of the, uh, color copies of the design, it's probably easier to read?
Yeah, I'm just checking to see what you guys, two mylarves and four cop.
Two of the copies are, these are color coded, further required.
So, they'll, they'll be easier to look at, just explain to us what we're doing, so everybody understands the combo.
So, same orientation, some panels are here, and here. The, uh, the Laflams own five parcels, and they're, it's a busy plan, but, um, there's one here, which is on Morgan Street. Uh, and then there's a large one that comes down, and is in this area. That's one of the parcels, they also own a parcel over here, and then they own a parcel here, and a parcel here. So, this parcel comes all the way down, like that, so, the, um-
So, they're taking two parcels and making one.
Yeah, that's correct, so they're combining what goes all the way down in Ludlow, and here, there's frontage on Morgan here, there's frontage in the east, and there's actually a frontage on Ludlow.
So, the dark hat line is-
Is the new piece, which would be a hundred and seventeen, and then they still own this and this, um-
So, there are no wet, the wetlands are here?
Wetlands are red, yeah, the red are wetlands.
Okay, so this is gonna be, well-
This is, yep, this is where the panels are, here's his home, so.
Panels are here, and here.
Here and here, correct.
How far down, they only go like here?
Um, this, this is the easement, so that, this is a dash line showing the area of the easement. And then, 'cause that's required by your co- by your regulations, there's an easement over here as well, these are re- at the registry. So, this easement line is actually gonna have to change. This easement line is shown on the plan that's referred to, um, right there, two forty-seven, fifty-one. So, that was set up for the old configuration, so we're gonna have to come up with a new easement plan that we didn't-
So, maybe you wanna change this before we sign anything?
I mean, we could-
That way, when you're recording it, it's all good.
Yeah, we could, we could do that, I mean, we didn't, we, we filed this in, as much for zoning protection as anything, so if we were to take this back now, it's not necessary for it to be endorsed, according to the attorney, it only has to file with the clerk to, for the zoning fees, but that's, he's the legal counsel, not me. They still, it would still be beneficial for Nexamp to have an A and R endorsed, and the combination of these lots, 'cause then it's from a financing and all that other stuff. They just have one lot that they're dealing with. But, we could, we could bring it back with the new easements, once the new easement's determined, we didn't redraw the easement, 'cause we didn't know this was gonna get approved, so.
Well, that way you're not doing a couple of, you're not doing a couple of recordings.
No, under the- Right, no, uh, uh, any surveyor would say record fewer plans, 'cause it's just less to chase down.
You can, you can sign it tonight, and then you don't have to record it.
That's correct.
With a new plan.
Right, we can bring back another one, and then we just, just not, never record this one.
But, but then we're gonna be asking you for money and everything else if we sign something this evening.
Mm-hmm, which, okay. Uh, we already gave, yeah, which we gave you money.
But, but that can still sit on Kathy's desk, or in Kathy's desk, if we didn't sign anything this evening. If we sign this-
We're three days from submission of a plan to sign for an A and R.
But the plan was submitted forty, fourteen days ago, but now we're finding out that there's gonna be a revision for easement.
Well, as, as Bill said, if you sign this, we don't record it, it just sits, it just sits in the drawer, and then we come back with the plan with the new easement, and there's a new easement plan referred to on it, because that's the one that's gonna matter.
With a new fee.
Right, with a new fee.
I don't think we care about the easement, do we? The easement's all by the same property.
Right, it just has to be shown on-
We're just showing, all we're signing off on is taking two parcels and making one, A and R.
That's correct, it's just content that has to show up on your plan, but, correct, you're just making one parcel, and then if they, and they're not selling, they can't sell anyway, 'cause it would change the whole character of the lots, so they're just, it's gonna help Nexamp, this is the part, like, when they insure and do all that paperwork, it's just easier to refer to one lot. And it was also for zoning protection, it was dual purposes, kinda like what we did in Charleston, we combined a bunch of lots.
I don't think you wanna have an easement on the plan that doesn't correspond to the final easement that's gonna be-
Right, and that will come later, now that we know that it's approved.
So, you're saying don't sign this?
I'm saying you-
Just saying don't record this.
Yes, correct.
Okay.
That's on you.
Right, and we won't, until, 'cause they don't want multiple plans recorded, so what we'll do is we'll do a new easement plan. They've already recorded the easement, 'cause they had to get a deal financially with the Laflams to go forward, so the easement plan's on record, so what we'll do is issue a new easement plan, it'll say right on it that it's superseding this-
So, would you prefer to, would you like us to sign up?
If you sign it, then we'll just, yes, please sign it, and then we'll just hold it, and then what we'll do is, we'll, we'll get, we'll do another plan of land, okay? We'll record that.
Are we good with this?
Yep.
We'll record the plan of land, uh.
Does it work for you, Rob?
Yes. Bob, you're good?
Yeah. Maybe I was confusing the goal issue.
No, no, I mean, it's a-
It's Kathy, so. Well, yeah, you don't have, you just have a big plan, you don't have any, you have a-
No, this, yeah, what was requested was six copies, so there's two mylarves, two uncolored or unrendered, or two rendered, that's what I'm, okay.
Is, maybe when you get the final one done?
We'll come back with another one.
Put it on a thunder over something?
Yeah, actually, um, I gave Kathy all of that, but I'll do it again, she can throw on us.
Okay, and you've already paid.
Yeah, I've paid. Yeah, right, better to have it, yeah. Then the attorney who there is-
That's it?
Is that, I don't know, you should, that's what I'm, I'm, I feel much better about having it signed.
And he's got so many that you're, um-
Trust me, that's why I don't pretend to be a attorney. It's not the same attorney that, uh, she's more exposed, okay, she's framing a base, this guy's working.
Two for you.
For you.
You went there and got it special?
Yes, just for you.
Two, and what is this one, a work of science?
Yeah, work of science. Yeah, frankly, there's only two there, and the other two- Yeah, somebody's giving them, and they're using time bombs, they can do that, because, saying the J R walked into their lot, so it's like, yeah.
Okay, so these two paper, a women, what do we keep now?
You have the sign, you have the sign we signed.
I haven't signed the paper one, I've signed the two mylarves.
I know, I'm sure someone else did, so those were good. We were supposed to be here tomorrow night.
Is that your thing?
They are the same, they're already-
It doesn't make any difference, we're coming, same.
This is, that's the plan, that's- So, do you guys keep one of mylarves, and then one of you, she can combine it with the four mylarves, okay? I've never had to give two mylarves to the top. It's not about any of them, to confirm, sign.
It's very, it's a very expensive thing now, for the applicant, as well as for us to store them.
Yeah, right.
When we have no storage.
Well, now, I mean, now you can get all the stuff, which is-
Right.
It's interesting with that few bits.
Well, I'll see this one.
That's Jimmy's.
Do we have a motion on the board to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Soon as I get over here.
To adjourn, or what, are we all set?
Um, what about, uh, Don, Jim, what do you say?
All right, thank you very much.
That's the one, um- Generally, we come-
Yeah. You can, you, feel free to talk to the, the town manager, we just, we're just a tenant.
Yeah.
Chris Martin.
Yes. Okay, yeah. I think that'll work better, then Mark can be there and he can, he can, uh.
We haven't set up a meeting on the fourth general.
How do you think, Buck?
Can he go over the stuff that we did? I'm sure he's.
Not yet, I have to sit him down. There's always a way.
Sixty-five days.
Thank you, thank you.
Bye.
See ya. So Donald General?
So we're already having a meeting on the fourth just for Red Rock. We're having a meeting on the eleventh, we continue the, Bereva.
So do we want to ask them to come in?
We'll have a meeting for all the applicants, yeah, yeah.
Everybody, you, you've got it, all the contacts?
Yeah, Donald General?
Billy, you got it?
Yes.
So.
He's ready, all packed up, there you go.
There was an A and R with that application, wasn't there?
Yes.
Red Rock or Dollar General?
Dollar General, there was an A and R subdivision of Dollar General.
So this was, this looks like it was stamped in on the seventh, so what's sixty-five days, what, what does that put us? We should be able to schedule us at our regular meeting on March, second week of March.
Oh, easily, yeah.
Yeah.
So I don't, so let's have Kathy.
Our second meeting in March, or twenty-fifth?
I meant the second week in March.
The second week?
Yeah, our first, our first regular meeting in March.
Second meeting?
That's when, uh.
Bereva. That's fine, but that's just, they're just coming back with, with some minor things for us to look at and.
The other one?
Red Rock?
Red Rock.
Is the fourth.
Is the fourth.
Is the fourth, the week before. So do we want Dollar General folks here to say, okay, we got this, how does this date work for you?
Yep.
At our next meeting, and then we'll schedule.
Will that give, yes, it will give Kathy time, if it's gonna give her time, from this meeting to the fourth, it's.
She can advertise for the eleventh at six o'clock.
If the.
No. At six o'clock, we've got, uh, Bereva at five forty-five. Six thirty.
Six thirty.
Okay, so, just to be clear, we want them to come to a meeting, and then we'll tell them we need to set up a public hearing? Or we just forgot it here, we'll go ahead and set it up?
Set up the public hearing for the, for the eleventh.
Okay.
Have Kathy advertise it for that.
And we need to let them know that?
Correct.
During the eleventh, so we have two public hearings?
Yeah, we're just finishing up the Bereva one, it shouldn't take too long, as provided they, they give us what we need, and then, um, and then we can move on to this one.
That's six thirty, do you want six thirty, do you want six?
Well, we're five forty-five for Bereva.
Okay.
Jim, can you?
What's the sixteen?
Six fifteen, that's a good compromise, it can always go late, as long as it's not prior to.
Right.
Yeah. Now, which one has to be with the ZDA?
The one, um, one in Street, and when's that?
That's not a hearing, that's just an informational meeting for them to come in so we can explain to them what they need.
You, you had left the room, and it was discussed by Bill and us, that they, that those folks should go to the building inspector first and let him see if he can help them where they want to pursue with us, as opposed to just coming to us first.
That's fine, but he's just gonna refer them to us because of the, the bylaws that says special permit, ZDA, he, he's nothing he can do for them.
Well, he may meet with them and they'll say, uh, no, we don't want to go through that, too.
Yeah, it says, you know, as only enforcement officer, we should make the call as to what's required, I think you're correct, I'll probably say the same thing, but better to have him say it.
That's fine.
Okay, so the eleventh for?
Six fifty for Dollar General.
And Bereva, one for that, five forty-five, okay. I would now like to make a motion to adjourn.
Go second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ayes have it.